Okay. The public hearing is now open. Anybody want to speak for or against the adoption of a fiscal year 2018-2017 budget? Okay, if not, this hearing is not closed. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go to the commission's court meeting. Call the order, let the record show that all commissioners are present. Please stand for the pleasure of reading.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nobody need it?
Nobody need it? All right, next, we're going to have discussion post last regarding the Robert County entering into a monthly lease agreement between Bitney Bowes to provide masked and maiden postal service for Bevart by the county clerk's office. Take a motion for that.
We have, I brought two term agreements, one for 36 months and one for 60 months. We're currently paying $219 a month and the 36-month agreement with the same, everything that they're doing is the same except they're going to upgrade all their meters and all their hardware to digital. It's the, for 36 months, it'd be $248 and if we were to enter into an agreement for 60 months, it'd be $194 with 19 cents and the other one with 56 cents respectively. So just in court, which one do you have?
You have a preference, Judge?
No, sir. I use it almost.
What are we paying out of?
I don't, I don't know.
My office applies.
Motion to approve the 36-month piece.
Okay, there's a motion, I need a second. Second, any more discussion? Not all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody?
Thank you.
And next, item six, setting the salaries, expenses, allowances, county elected officials fiscal year 2017-2018.
Motion to approve, do we have the list?
No, I requested it from the district clerk, that's where I have to get it. They were going to bring it over to me.
And we have an order now, it's there, so.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, I need a second. Second. Tell all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody? Five, zero. Next, establish salary agreements committee for fiscal year 2017-2018, appoint members and alternate members.
May I? On the grievance committee, it comes from that list that you picked.
Okay.
Since we don't have the list yet, sometimes the court will wait to actually have a agreement, to actually appoint one, or you can have the grievance committee ready to go and hear any grievances. If we don't have any grievances, then we don't.
Yeah, we have.
We don't call them any members, grievance committee.
We have an appointment to, there's a agreement. The only thing is, though, the list is short on time. If we have to appoint some members if there's a agreement, we don't have any.
Right. Well, by statute, I think there's already certain members, you're only going to pick three after the agreement.
By statute, you have to pick one of two choices, either have them add public members or those specific elected officials with some public members. But if you're going to pick them today, you need to pick alternates because in the past, a lot of the alternates have failed to serve or said that they couldn't.
Or they're accepted.
Yeah.
But we don't have any.
We don't have any.
They're supposed to come out of them.
Yes. I requested it, we don't have the list. They have the grand jury. They're going to, I call this one, you're going to try and get it.
Can we just table this and go on with our deal, maybe we can get the list from the district clerk.
Okay, let's table this one. And next, item eight, adoption of a budget fiscal year 2017-2018. Is everybody going to copy of it, this is the same, the last one we talked about? Go ahead, Matt.
There's the budget as presented.
Too excited.
Those are all items we've been discussing the last two months.
The only thing I, all of us have been talking about also, maybe some either raises or whatever you want to call it. Judge, do you want to?
Yeah, we've been talking about it and I, you know, I asked Juanita to look into, when the DA comes into with the county, I think we're going to have a little bit of money left over, and I was asking her if we could give a bonus at the end of the year for it, not for elected officials, but just employees, $500 bonus. And I think we could bring it up in November, I think we can do that if we get the extra money. And there's a legal opinion that I put in your, everybody's, that we could do that.
We're going to wait and see if we get, if we're going to get, if we get it.
Can I look at the legal opinion?
I think I, I.
I just, I don't know if you did it or didn't.
I think that the thing from the Labor Department was that we could not use the word stipend, but we could use the word bonus. And I wanted it in writing that way, we could.
Yeah, the usual language with other entities is non-recurring one-time, not paying necessarily bonus, but.
Basically, we're just waiting for more money to come in or be able to do it.
Yeah.
If it's possible.
If it's possible.
We don't necessarily have to amend this budget, we can go with like 111, 01, 08, where we can just bring in a special budget since that revenue was not anticipated, so we can make a special budget for that revenue.
Okay, in this event, because the county does, can't gift money, you have to have a specific reason for it. So you have to lay out that people are going to get a bonus because.
Right.
And there has to be a specific reason, it can't just be because we had a good year. So, that's going to be probably Juanita, where's Juanita? You're going to probably have to recommend some kind of structure as to how people get bonuses.
Okay. I bet that's going to come in November, in case we do get the extra money.
Okay.
And you know that it has to be, it can't be for work they've already, it's got to be established then, you can't do retroactive payments. So if you're going to give a bonus, it's going to be as the situation exists at that time. Those factors are going to be as they exist at that time.
Right, which would be currently employed with the county.
And there has to be something tied into it, it can't just be giving money, you have to have a reason for it and it has to be tied into their job.
Well, that's, that's an incentive bonus, right?
No.
It's called longevity pay.
It could be longevity pay. It could be, you know.
But if we do it longevity pay, it's not going to be standardized across the board.
When you establish a beginning longevity pay, we can do a one-time longevity pay for everybody and then establish a different rate.
Have you established a policy for longevity pay, you give either from this year to this year, you give a percent and then it maxes out wherever the court does things, but you have to put it in a formal policy. And present that, that before we pass it to the court. Something different, but we've got the.
Well, I'm sure we'll figure it out, eh?
Juanita, I mean, she's good at that.
Judge, are you recommending appointed officials being included in the? No.
Elected.
Not elected officials.
Or appointed?
No.
I don't think you can do appointed officials because we have to publicize it, don't we? We would have to publicize it.
Any increases, you'd have to publish.
That's appointed. So basically, department heads and everybody would get something except elected officials.
Except elected.
Elected and appointed officials.
Which is my entire staff. We'll square it up next year.
When y'all met with the different judges, y'all should have had that conversation.
That's getting even.
Ma'am.
It shows, and I'm on page six, well, this says 66 of 169. It shows a beginning fund balance of 1.1, estimated revenue is 17 million, total of 18 million, estimated defender is 16, and then it has appropriated fund balance of 2.4 million.
Correct. That's our appropriated fund balance. It's a tool that's just designed to use that we appropriate it so that if, on emergency situations, that if it is has to be used, we don't have to do a budget amendment because it's already appropriated for the year's current emergency expenditures.
So if we don't utilize it, we will end the year with a $2.4 million fund.
Correct. And the goal on appropriate fund balance is, well, you can set that policy, but it's usually around 60 days.
And this gives us about?
It's pretty close.
Pretty close, 60 days.
About 55, 56.
Six days.
Pretty darn close.
But, but 60 is the minimum.
That is a good point, 60 is the floor. The goal is maybe three, three to, they say six months, but that's more likely not going to happen, but three months and then the days.
So our objective is to not utilize those funds.
That is definitely the objective.
Do you all have a copy of the budget for Janie because she needs to follow along?
Absolutely.
Do you have one?
She can have mine. I'm getting a. I haven't played with that one yet.
Okay, any other, any other comment?
From anybody or just Matt?
Anybody.
Okay, y'all have received my letter and without going into great detail at this time, I believe that the method by which you set the salaries in my office is arbitrary and capricious, that it's not based on work responsibilities, any kind of specified articulated reason, and the fact that Mr. Commissioner Middleton had suggested a raise in the position of my first assistant means that at some point he believed that that was appropriate and then it became apparent that if I didn't accept it right away, that number was going to be yanked. So I'm reurging that because you are required by law to fund the offices as appropriate, give elected officials the resources they need, and it has to be done with some kind of reason, some kind of logic, otherwise it should be construed as arbitrary and capricious and I believe that that's, I mean, you guys just get the numbers out of the air, so with, with Mr. Bagley, he came in with salaries, those salaries are mostly funded by the county and all without any need for explanation, said, yeah, we're going to give you those salaries. So I'm reurging my request to have the base salaries for my assistant's increase.
My, my opinion on that, you, I can't vote and I can't agree with your second assistant. I don't know what the court wants to do with the first, and nothing against your second assistant, but it would be a raise that I haven't voted for for everybody else.
And see, that's articulating reason and that's what I'd like to hear from everybody else.
First assistant, if you were not able to find somebody at the 70-some-odd thousand, the 81,000 I think is the base pay for, I think it's what we set the base pay for in the DA's office, right?
Yes, right.
The base pay for the, for the DA's office is 81.
All right.
The base pay, payroll, the base pay was set before attorney offices on the base pay. It just depends on how you consider base pay. This is his first year since we are adopting a new entity, do they come in base pays or they come in primarily what they would be low-rated?
Well, at the time y'all voted, you called it base pay. And that's not to mention the bonuses to the compensation that they're receiving from a fund that may run out, you might run out of money and at that point, the county will be responsible for paying those bonuses.
How, how would the county be responsible?
Because you set the, the county set the salaries.
We, we set, we set what the county is responsible for, but we did not set a supplemental rate, which is why.
If, if the money runs out, we'll talk about what Mr. Bagley's position is going to be at that time, if the money runs out.
The base pay in this budget for the first assistant at the district attorney is $74,362.50. The second assistant is $63,987.50. That's the base pay that's in this budget.
That's not what you approved?
142.
Correct.
But that's not what you, that's not what you approved in open court.
I'm going to get to the other part. The proposed pay is 81,627, supplemented by 18,000 from the DA's. The second assistant's pay is 69,926, supplemented by 15,000 from the DA's office.
Getting back to that argument about the supplement, when you set the salary for the district attorney's staff, it's based on the fact that that's what they're entitled to, based on their job requirements, their experience, their duties, and even though that money's coming from the DA's office, you're finding laws that they are entitled to make that entire salary. So even though you're saying it's coming from the DA's office, this court has already found that each of these individuals is entitled to that kind of money.
We're following the exact same procedure that other counties are following where the DA supplements their salary as well.
No, I'm not saying that they can't supplement their salary. I'm saying that in the event that the, that each salary is reviewed by a court, they're going to find that this court said the district attorney's staff makes X number of dollars regardless of the source of the funds, that that's what they're entitled to, that that's what they deserve, that that's what they should get regardless of the source of the funds.
So what, what happens when we lose a supplement for the judge? Do we have to pick up that supplement as well?
No, that's state, that's state mandated, that state says you pay the judge X amount of dollars for having court.
So because he's using his discretion to pay whatever funds that he has to pay this, if he runs out of those funds, if he runs out of pre-trial or if he runs out of, not pot check, if he runs out of chapter 59, we would be on the hook to fulfill those?
Yes, because you set salaries, you need to understand that you set the total amount regardless of the source of the funds.
Well.
And I'm not arguing that because that's something that'll come up in the future and I'm not arguing for that salary for each of my staff members, but I just wanted you to know that, to make it clear that this court has said these people can earn this amount of money regardless of the source because of whatever presentation was made in terms of their duties, requirements, workload, whatever, this court has found that that's the salary that they should make.
We, I can check with other entities if that has ever been the case, it is set up like other entities and I, I did question those, what happened when they do run out of chapter 59 funds, what does their salary revert to? And the reply was what the general fund's obligation is.
This was a legal opinion?
This was not a legal opinion, so this was the, how the entity was going to handle it.
And that's by agreement, and if you have the district attorney agreeing to do that, saying, okay, the funds are reduced, their salaries are reduced, that's something different. But the court sets the salaries regardless of the sources. That's the, that's the general rule, the court sets the salaries regardless of the fund sources.
Okay, so I guess that'll be a discussion when, if that ever happens.
Exactly, but the reason I bring it up is because there's a misunderstanding as to how salaries are set, as there appears to be, the facts need to be articulated, the reasoning needs to be articulated, it can't be, oh, I think so-and-so needs to make $60,000, you know, but so-and-so is making $50,000. Well, what's the difference? You have to articulate and that hasn't been done.
Any more?
Any more? All right, okay, there's a motion, I need a motion for that to be approved, unless you're going to amend the salaries as stated before.
Absolutely.
Come on, need a second.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, five, zero. Thank you.
And I, I want to thank you for not having any discussion because that supports my position that it's arbitrary and capricious.
All right, next, item nine, adoption of the tax rate for fiscal year 2017-2018.
We are awarding a motion.
On the tax rate?
Or from the auditor, Frankie's to go. And you have to have a separate motion for each category.
I think we don't have a motion.
I don't think this is all right. Aren't we adopted, the effective rate does not generate additional revenue.
The effective rate does generate additional revenue, yes.
That's the same way you open the effective tax rate.
Right.
This is what the.
Can we get the wording?
The wording comes from either the auditor or the tax assistant.
And we have to say by how much it exceeds. What's the difference?
The difference?
No, the percentage is .75%, the dollar difference. How much additional revenue does it generate?
That's, yeah, $140,000. That I had to make a statement. It's in 111?
This is what the expectation from the court. It's just.
No, no, I just need the number, so we can take it.
Yeah, $140,397. It's on the cover page of your budget.
All right, I move that the property tax rate is increased by the adopted tax rate of which is effectively a .75% increase in tax rate. This year's levy is funded maintenance and operating expenses exceeds last year's maintenance operating tax levy of $140,397. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. Robert County adopts a tax rate that will raise more money, more, raise more taxes in maintenance of operation than last year's tax rate.
There's a motion, I need a second.
The rate being.
My green tab.
$2,000 is. Tax rate would be, general fund .4993, interest and sinking zero, firm-to-market tax .0244, for a total of .5237.
I'm sorry, are those different taxes you're talking about?
The general fund tax rate, the interest and sinking fund tax rate, and the firm-to-market for a total tax rate.
Each of those have to be a separate motion in order.
I'll do the first one.
Because 140 includes everything, right?
Yeah, that's from new property.
Paul, we usually done is table this item till we get the wording right and then we'll come back.
Because usually they're listed separately and I think the road and bridge fund is also.
Well, unless one of them are altogether. Okay. Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion.
Go ahead.
All right, I move that the property tax rate be increased by adopting a tax rate of which is effectively a, see, this one shows a .3% increase in tax rate.
In revenue.
Oh, in revenue. But your percentage of increase in the tax rate is .75%. So it's a .75% increase in tax rate for the general fund amount, tax rate of .4993.
Okay, that's, that's the first motion? I need a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. I mean, Commissioner Olson proposes for one.
These numbers are going to change. For the interest and sinking fund, there is no tax rate.
Correct. Yeah, I don't remember what word, I have no knowledge of this statement.
What are you talking about?
The statement.
The statement.
But you, the proposed tax rate on the interest and sinking is zero?
Correct. The general fund interest and sinking were together and then.
That's all you wanted to talk about.
So it didn't matter.
You just give an information.
It didn't matter on the interest and sinking, it was together with the general fund.
But the firm-to-market tax rate is the same as last year?
No, it is not, it goes up, it was 0243 last year, this year is a 0244.
So it goes up by the same, .75%.
Is that, that calculation? The calculation is only total tax rate on how it goes up, it's not calculated individually.
We need to do the calculator.
Need some more information before we do this.
Yeah, I was going to say, won't we come back?
I need that other sheet.
Motion to table?
I need the other sheet. That says all of this stuff in it. Do we have it?
I do have.
Does.
Do you have it?
The other part is that it says only if it exceeds the effective tax rate, but this does not exceed the effective tax rate. I don't get it, but that's just.
All right, let's table that till we come back.
Had you made a motion? Did you make a second?
Not, not, that's, all right, let's go to item 10, setting the date, time, and place of regular Robert County Commissioners Court Meeting.
What date, you mean, like the second Monday?
The second Monday of.
Very month, but are we going to go to a two-meeting month?
It's up to us to decide.
Because of the bill payments.
Because of the bill payment.
I think, Matt, you have a recommendation?
Second, fourth would be.
For how many times they meet?
Oh, well, that would be up.
Recommendation.
That would be up to how often you, if you would like to pay bills or, typically we pay utilities, some other bills, maintenance, some of our, our other expenses.
But your payroll is every two weeks.
Our payrolls every two weeks, however, our travel and training, we pay that on Fridays. Now, in order for us to distribute those checks, they need to be signed off before and in order to do that, we would have to meet every week unless you want.
So what's your recommendation?
Recommendation, well, it depends on how often you want to meet. If you want to meet every week, we can continue up. If you want to meet every week, we can continue operating maintenance activities. If you choose that you want it every two weeks, which would absolutely have to be a priority in order to get payroll out, then our Friday checks would be suspended every two weeks.
So bottom line is, at least two weeks.
At least two weeks, but what that's going to do is, these Friday checks that usually go up for travel and training and utilities, that would cease. It would just, it would be bumped down to every...
But if they put in their request a little bit earlier, then that could happen too.
That's just a plain motion. Unless it's an emergency.
Yeah, that's true of everybody.
Unless it's an emergency.
You, you are correct about that.
So we need to meet twice a week, maybe? I mean, twice a month?
The second and fourth Monday of every month?
No, I wanna go Mondays. I'm not able to kick that out on Mondays.
That's how come we're asking for your...
Tuesday, Friday, and...
Wednesdays would probably be best for us. Maybe like a ten to two type thing. No, I'm just teasing.
All right, slow down.
Right. Wednesday... But Wednesday, because by that time, we'll have everything prepared.
So if we hold our regular Commissioners Court the second Monday of every month, and then do the other one, you know, two weeks later on the Wednesday or something like that, would that work?
Yeah, that would necessarily work because, uh, payroll is not prepared at that time, and we're on a twenty-six pay month cycle, a twenty-six week cycle, so that's gonna vary. So...
Yeah, you're gonna be thrown off two times a year because you have that extra paid group.
Correct.
And you're gonna be thrown off. Which at that point, then the judge can just call a meeting to approve those payrolls.
Okay. But if you're gonna make a meeting static, it's, it's, you're gonna have to have some flexibility in that. Uh, we can work up a payroll schedule.
Well, I mean, once we set this, there's no flexibility in it, that's the set.
For the regular meeting, the set.
The set. Now, the other ones, if we don't set the second meeting as, as a regular meeting, then we can just do special meetings and do whatever, whatever date we need, as long as you have seventy-two hours.
Yeah.
But this meeting has to happen on that date at that time, every single time.
Right. But if we're to get packets to you on Friday for a Monday meeting and payrolls that week...
Let's make it simple.
There's no way.
Let's set a once a month meeting, and then y'all can set special meetings to meet payroll.
Okay, and that'll happen now.
And then you can set those on the dates you want.
Not every other Wednesday.
Well, that's...
And what's gonna happen on Monday? Does that affect whether or not you, you get payroll?
With that, the regular Mondays meetings? No, that's not gonna affect payroll because we're gonna have the Wednesday meetings that align with payroll.
Okay, and so then the following Monday? Is that gonna affect payroll?
Yeah, you, on our regular Mondays, we, we're not gonna have payroll for you to approve it. It's just not gonna happen.
So then you need to move the meetings to Wednesdays. A regular meeting needs to be on Wednesday.
If you wanna have a regular meeting on Wednesday, you can do that.
Well, because in that order, you got meetings on Monday.
But Matt, what's gonna work in order for the payroll to go out every other week? For you, what's gonna work?
Every other Wednesday?
Okay.
The second and fourth.
So it'd be, no, no, every other Wednesday is completely different than the second and fourth.
Yes!
It's gonna be, sometimes it's gonna be the second and fourth, sometimes it's gonna be the first and third because of the way the weeks fall. But... Can we say it's every other Wednesday?
Just with the start date, yeah. Like, what the first meeting on that Wednesday's gonna be when?
Starting October first, starting October four.
We would, we would have to have a, a meeting next Wednesday to get payroll out on Friday.
Okay, so then...
But that's not the second Monday of, of the month.
Yeah, so then...
Yeah, but we're moving, we're moving Monday's meetings apparently to Wednesday.
That wouldn't really work because the second Monday would be the ninth.
We're not doing Monday's, we're doing Wednesday's.
No, we're not gonna do Monday's.
Every other Wednesday.
What's the first Wednesday in October that you need to make payroll?
The fourth.
The fourth.
So then if you go ev- two weeks after that on Wednesday, huh? That'd get you payroll. Then you go two weeks after that, they get you payroll.
That would be the first of November.
And then two weeks after that, they get you payroll. And then two weeks after that, they get, alright, okay.
So starting on the fourth?
Make a motion, starting on the fourth of October, the meeting be set for Wednesday nine AM in this room, in the Old County Court of law.
Okay, there's a motion. I need a second.
Every other Wednesday beginning October fourth.
Second.
There's a second. Any more discussion? Okay, motion, second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero, thank you. Item eleven, consider payment to county precinct officials on either a fee or a salary basis. What is that?
That's an option that the court has. Either the elected officials can collect the fee and keep it, or they can be on a salary basis, and historically, it's been a salary basis.
Motion to set, uh, payment as a salary basis.
Okay, there's a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Item twelve, related to fiscal year, fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, established limited reimbursement per diem rates.
Who has that? Who has rates?
Thank you.
And unfortunately, that policy goes off IRS code. IRS code doesn't change till December. Talking about GSA ratios, just came out today yesterday.
What's the rate right now?
For mileage? Fifty-two and a half, fifty-three and a half.
What we've done in the past is adopt the IRS rate so that as it changes throughout the year, that rate can change. Is that your motion?
And that's gonna change December.
That's what I mean, so when I come back and re-adopt it. And then your per diem rate?
Per diem rate is still, depending on the city you're going to, fifty-two or fifty-nine, but that did not change. That schedule is out. Ours is forty-six, uh, which is roughly approximately the seventy-five percent on the first day out and the last day in, but...
So we, I make a motion to adopt the mileage rate at the IRS rate, and that change is as needed, and that the per diem rate is forty-five per day.
Forty-five or forty-six?
Sorry, forty-six.
Okay, so you wanna leave it at forty-six?
Well, I don't believe forty-six, but that's where we're at, so... We can discuss changing it.
Okay, there's a motion, I need a second for that?
Y'all gotta start making seconds, man. I'm gonna quit making motions.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody.
Doing a good job there. You really are.
Well, don't do that. All right, next, setting trapper's salary.
The trapper salaries, um, are in the, uh, budget that was just approved on page sixty-seven.
Okay, and do they, they tell you, in the past, again, um, they have a lump sum for the trapper salary, and I don't know what the budget looks like, I don't have a copy, uh, but they have a lump sum, and then you set how much they're gonna get paid every month. And in the past, also, it wouldn't matter if it was one trapper or ten trappers, there would be that one figure every month that they would divide, but I don't know how y'all are gonna do it this year. I don't know.
We paid off the invoice. So whatever invoice comes in, that's what we pay, and then it does not exceed, uh, that stated amount.
And if you guys are gonna be doing it every other week?
Four, four...
There's two trappers, I make a motion, we pay a lump sum.
Okay, there's a motion?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
We're gonna pay a lump sum, no matter what the invoice says?
Correct. You'll get the invoice and pay the lump sum, right?
No, no, the invoice we get is, is, uh, it's split up throughout the year.
Is it split? Is it a different amount, or is it a, a set amount?
I'm not sure.
So make a motion, effective in that way.
Okay. Pay the invoice.
Motion is whatever she said.
I didn't get that at all, I'm sorry.
Whenever the invoice is sent.
But there's already a motion on the floor, so...
And I'll be with you. I'll be doing that. Okay, there's a motion?
The, what, what's the motion? To set it by what?
By the invoice.
Okay.
Okay. All right, there's a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Next appointment of withholding agent?
Who's on withholding agent?
That's gonna be us.
Are you into withholding agent?
Matt, you said that's supposed to be us?
Uh, we're, we're the ones that are withholding the fees.
Okay, tell them.
The auditor.
Who's currently the payroll division that is withholding the taxes and remitting them to the taxing entities.
The payroll division?
The payroll division.
Interesting. Appointment of the withholding agent will be the payroll division.
In the county auditor's office.
And...
County auditor's office.
I didn't state payroll division because payroll division is not a statutory duty, it can be assigned to any department of corporate life.
You audit yourself.
That, that discussion was already had.
All right, there's a motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody. Okay, next, we have approval of the orders relating to levy of occupational taxes and license beer, wine, and liquor.
What's sorry?
B was gonna get that information. Last week or the week before.
That's what she's not back?
Well, she did come back.
She came back, gave me the paper, and then she left, and now, after reading the paper, we gotta go back and undo all the things that we just did, so...
All right. All right, let's, let's wait till she comes back, let's work on the next item, approval of the orders, I'm sorry, establishing the county holidays, and I think everybody got a list of the county holidays for fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Presenting in August, I mean...
Yeah, August, that's happening.
And you guys work for what you're calling? Well, th- there's a state holiday that is celebrated legitimately in August, which is LBJ Day honoring the first president from the state of Texas, from the great state of Texas, that served, and it's a statewide holiday, and that would give you a holiday to approve in August.
I just brought it up. I've sat on this court for sixteen years, I've heard the same argument for sixteen years.
But it's not been exactly the same.
Motion to approve holidays as presented.
Okay, there's a motion, I need a second?
No, we're not getting seconds today.
Anybody second it?
Second.
Second, okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody.
And I know now that...
Are you opposed to it? Four one.
The court is being very disrespectful of LBJ.
Every day.
The court is being very disrespectful of LBJ.
I know.
I know it is.
I know we are. All right, before we come back, why don't we do the amended, uh...
Amendments?
Commended, uh...
The addendum.
Addendum, I'm sorry, addendum.
Judge, I have a list, but if you wanna go back to that stable item on the salary grievance.
Okay. Okay, we have a list of the, let's go back to the several, uh, salary grievance committee?
Number seven.
Number seven, most tabled. Okay, what's the, what's the, can somebody make a motion accept those? Give us the list there. Names of the...
Six and three or nine?
There are sixteen.
Six and three or nine? Elect or six?
Six and three.
Okay. First, the court has to establish where you want it, uh, do you want to establish the committee to be six electives plus three publics or nine publics?
That's the first.
That's the first thing you need to do.
Okay, so many? Say it again?
Six electives and three, um, public members. And the elected officials are set out in the local government code.
Okay, so we don't even need to name them, they're done. So actually, we need to pick three public?
Correct.
And then you wanted three alternate?
There'd be six alternate.
The three are, and then three alternates, yes, correct.
Okay, how do we pick the three public?
Well, first you establish, yeah. She's got her names in the canisters.
Pick them, Judge.
No, but first you have to establish the...
You want, let's make a motion to establish what, what you want.
Six and three.
Make a motion to establish the committee, six elected, three public, and three alternate. That work?
There's a motion, I need a second. Second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed. Nobody, five zero. All right, the first one is Alonso Martinez.
Shake them off.
The second is...
Put him back.
I'm not saying I cannot pronounce his name. Alshadid, himbrahim.
That's him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I believe it. Himbrahim, himbrahim.
Can you, Judge, can you pass that?
I get it.
Yeah, I need to...
Give me the other one, then I'll take a moment.
That one was hard to pronounce.
The first one, please, I want to know if he has a...
Yeah, I need our piece, is the third one?
The first three will be, uh, ones that will serve, and the next three will be the alternate served.
Yeah. And the alternate would be George Davis. Douglas Fitzgerald. And Martin Humphries. Those are the alternates. Is that in here? Okay, I need a motion to accept those names.
So much.
Apparently, the AG's office was supposed to be in this court once.
Yep.
And they're out there.
They want a copy, or they said they can do it out there, but they need a copying machine.
They can do the whole thing out there.
But they need a copy.
And where the people at? They're very interesting.
I don't know.
They said they were starting it, but they knew that's like ten o'clock, so we need to... All right, I need a motion to accept those names?
I'm gonna make a motion. I gotta make my own motion.
Okay, there's a motion, I need a second, okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
All right.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero.
Let me go back to the tax rate judge.
All right, let's go back to the one that we tabled, the tax rate, number nine. Go ahead.
On the original motion that I made, I'm gonna withdraw that motion.
The second accept, hunting?
Yes. Because what this says is, a motion to adopt an order or resolution, or order setting a tax rate that exceeds the effective rate must be as follows. This rate does not exceed the effective rate. So it is just a standard motion.
It doesn't exceed.
Make a motion to adopt the tax rate. The general fund of point four nine nine three, and the interest and sinking fund of point zero 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 zero, and in the foreign, uh, foreign to market fund of point oh two four four, for a total of four, five, two, three, seven.
Do you set the road and bridge rate?
At the same time. That, these orders are only if we go above the effective rate.
Yeah, but this is just the adoption, which is not...
Adoption of the tax rate.
Okay, but the road and bridge fund is gonna be the same?
What do you mean same?
A rate?
The rate does not exceed the effective rate.
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion?
Second.
Second? Okay, any more discussion? Not all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? Five zero. All right? We're doing all the ones that we tabled. All right, next, let's go to the addendum. Because possible acting of final items, amendments to twenty six, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen budget.
Anything? Okay, we can move on, B?
We don't have any?
I don't have any.
No? Okay. All right, next, government capital?
That's for the purchase of the park, right?
Yeah.
Um, the, the item that's been posted properly doesn't have notice to the public of what action they're taking regarding what item.
Okay. What we can do there is, there is a resolution that has to be worded, uh, government capital wanted a certain wording. So what we can do is schedule a, a meeting for Monday in order to get that resolution on there, to get that worded, to get that signed.
We have a meeting on Wednesday.
On Wednesday?
I started having a meeting on Monday, and then on Wednesday, if they could just work for Wednesday.
That sounds like a better idea.
And the agenda item would be approving a resolution to...
Approving a resolution, okay.
To whatever it is you're gonna do.
I do have the exact wording that they sent that they want on there.
Right, and that would be, that doesn't have to be part of the agenda item, but that would be the resolution that passed.
Okay.
All right, let's go to item C, DA.
We can't discuss any of these. Can we?
Well, um, DA vacation payout, you know what that is, right? Well, um, DA vacation pay, you know what that is, right?
But do we have to do it as an individual item?
Yeah.
So, I mean, the, the way this is, we can't discuss the other.
No, you can say one C.
Okay.
Hi, in your package, you'll see the, uh, the table there. Of the vacation hours that have been built up in the DA's employees, and when they become county employees, are their maximums, that they're allowed to carry. And the request is to pay these out of the payroll account, to, uh, score these employees up for their overages. Now, the issue that we're gonna have is, there's not enough funds in that DA payroll account to cover the overages, so. So, the request is.
Sorry.
To be able to use some other funds under, uh, covered county DA's control.
I think the D rates, these hourly rates are on.
Mm-hmm.
Forty eight, oh eight, and the twenty three seventeen, and the twenty three sixty one, those are the current hourly rates?
Those would be the current hourly rates at, correct, at the rate that they're making.
But what are the rates? The way that budget was adopted, we adopted a salary.
That's the third table.
Which is our, which would be the.
County's liability.
County's obligation.
Right, that would be county's liability.
And so, we're paying now. Which one?
Which one?
I got three.
Right, the, the, the third table is the county's obligation at county pay rates.
And then this is the DA would have to pay out of his fund.
This if he was to zero them out, and they would come in with a zero liability to the county, that's the, that's the total amount.
And this one would need to get down to a hundred and fifty two dollars.
Correct, this would be to come in at the maximum of the county's, uh, tier, and then that would be, uh, the obligation the county is going to assume by bringing that in.
Just expand the time they have to see that.
Do, do you have that, you know? Does he have money, uh, Matt? Does he have money within, cause he's got like three accounts.
Correct.
That he has money.
Correct.
He's shaking his head no.
I don't have that type of money to pay what's been in my payroll account. If this is approved in the last item, the last alternative is approved, which is the least costly to the county, we're gonna have to come up with some additional funds to supplement what's in my payroll account. That's what I was informed yesterday, five minutes. And the only other funds that we could tap into would be, um, the large account that was turned over, which is still under audit, and then, and or, we could also, you need to remember as well, that there was also, uh, three payments that were withheld from my office reporting payments. And it's not much that we're lacking here, we're just, uh, if we're doing this last alternative, which is the one I recommend as well, is that one worth mentioning? This is my county's liability to bring them on. Right. Do you, do you have here? Okay. Okay, so I think ours would be the first one, in other words, I, I'm short, I'm not gonna be able to cover all this, because we still have, we just did payroll this week, we have bills that have to be approved and taken care of as well. So, we're gonna have to have a transfer of funds in order for us to take care of this, and I think what Matt is recommending, certainly from our own, is that the, these individuals will come in, and there'd be some hours that are gonna be carried over, and then some are gonna be paid out. Well, correct, if you pay this out, this means the county's liability as they come in.
Right. We had the same issue with county employees, was it last year?
Yes.
What did we do, we extended the time?
To extend the, hold on, and we send her something, that's the memo, and just send it out, anybody that's got somewhere, just come and send it out.
Well, I'm more inclined to extend the time we have to take it over. You don't like that.
That's fine. Oh, we're gonna get additional funds. Well, there's several places you can look to get additional funds, where, from the three forty payments that withheld from my office, there's one, source of funds right there, that's a worth three hundred and five thousand dollars, approximately. What do you have?
We already spent.
And those funds run out tender to our office, because I've been operating a bunch of funds, and I've done so throughout this whole fiscal year, and I think we've done a real good job operating the office.
I don't disagree with you.
So, I don't see how the county can't allow us to take extra amount of money, just from that you're still netting and realizing a net profit, if you will, from those minutes.
Well, I don't, I don't consider it a net profit, I mean, the money that we're operating off of, our money to start with.
And certainly a net savings to the county. What about those smaller accounts?
Well, that's a common issue, they're not ours, I mean, they're yours, right?
Yeah, in the A, it's all gonna be compiled, and then just.
Now, they've been all. There, there's three accounts there, there was four account, one six hundred, one sixty one, whatever, uh, that's why I was asking, was there money in those other three accounts to pay that out, cause then you wouldn't even, even need a.
There is, cause there's a good seven to eight thou- eight thousand dollars short, yeah, and there, there is.
Part of the accounts that are being ordered now?
Correct, and, uh, we're still handling that.
Use the funds for this purpose. If they're being ordered.
If Matt says you can, you can.
Yeah, there was.
I'm, I'm just asking, I'm asking.
You kept calling on it, chapter fifty nine.
Yes, but see, chapter fifty nine funds are, are separate and apart from the funds that are being audited, the chapter fifty nine funds are the funds that are in my discretion, that I have control over those.
And, and those are the ones that I was saying, what you have in mind, which you, I own.
Commissar, in all due respect, Count Judge, I don't think I should be forced to have to use my discretionary funds to take care of their vacation.
Well.
Unless, unless the county.
My, my, my opinion, just one of five up here, we've never paid for vacations, I have a real hard time paying for somebody's vacation because it wasn't managed right, just, just, that's just my opinion.
Mismanagement is the, is the phrase we're using.
And, and I mean, you know, we, we extended the time for everybody else, uh, some of them lost some hour, and I mean, I, I just.
And this goes back how far?
Uh, it goes back for, uh, well, since October two thousand twelve. For these three respective employees, I mean, they were, some of, they were employed after that date, I think we have the dates of employment, they had fired.
But they weren't county employees at the time?
Yeah, we, we have no idea, their, their hours, how fast they were accruing hours, we don't know what their schedule was.
These hours that were accruing are based off of what?
Exactly.
Exactly, that's a question.
So, to me, they would come in, they would come in with zero hours, and then if he has something on a separate set of books that he wants to give them time off on, that's between him and them. They don't, those hours don't have any, they're two separate sets of hours, they haven't accrued any county hours yet.
Okay, um, well, we know the situation is unusual, so, I'm, should we talk about executive session or?
No.
No, okay, we know.
Cause we don't have an executive session.
Okay, well, we know the situation is unusual, we're trying to correct it going forward, and we're trying to.
Well, I'm just saying, we're trying to correct an inequity that was made.
It's not gonna be perfect, we don't know how these hours were accrued, at what schedule they were accrued, that we don't know, how they amassed so much so fast.
I don't know what the rate of accrual was.
And that's the commissar's point.
As my understanding, they were, they were still accruing them at the same rate that it was done by the county policy, there were some, there was an attempt to, to, uh, to still go by the county policies, even though they weren't part of the county, so they were still trying to do that, but again, I wasn't there either.
Yeah.
So, but I just think it would be completely unfair and unjust to these employees if they have to come in at zero, because granted, they have not been county employees since October two thousand twelve, but they did accrue these hours, and we're just trying to fashion some type of remedy that would be just.
I'm not saying they can't take the hours, I'm saying as part of the county deal, it starts at zero, if you have a set of books that they're still owed these hours, then they're still owed these hours that you can give them time off for.
Why do you have a problem using your discretionary funds?
Well, because, Commissioner, the way the budget, it's just been approved, am I correct? Okay, the way it's been adopted, as you well know, I'm gonna have to come in and supplement my people's salaries, and it's gonna cost about approximately fifty five thousand dollars per fiscal year for me to do that. Until I know for sure that I'm gonna get monies back from the audit, it's hard for me to predict the future, it's hard for me to tie something into it and say, yes, I can do this, I can't do that, this money that I have in my chapter fifty nine is subject to my discretion, and I need that for other matters, I need that for other issues that may come up here in the year. I'm gonna have to use some of that money right now to cover the next, for the next fiscal year, for the supplemental salaries, until I know for sure what the money's coming back to me from the audit, I don't know if I'm gonna get two hundred back, I don't know if I'm gonna get three hundred, hell, I don't know if I'm gonna get anything back, it would be immature and disingenuous to me to sit there and say, yes, I can use those funds, cause I don't have those funds yet.
That is correct.
Thank you.
How far, how far are we with the audit?
We're, we're actually, uh, making pretty good ground, um, she, uh, she's actually on it.
She's actually.
Are you confident?
She's working on it.
But how far along?
How far along, I, I don't know, I don't know where the end is, so I can't give a percentage, but I, I do know that some significant ground has been made as of recently.
Significant ground, Commissioner, that's the answer.
What would be the quickest way to get him his money and get us?
Okay, which, which money?
The four nine, there's six hundred and nineteen thousand in an account.
Mm-hmm.
How do we split that, what's the quickest way to get it?
Well, that's why we do the audit.
But no way to do it, till you know where it came from.
Mm-hmm, cause it may not be anybody's.
Yeah, it may be the state of Texas's money.
Nah, it's not.
You know, I'm just saying, you know.
Oh, it's possible, but it's not gonna happen. I have faith.
Great.
Okay, let's figure it out, do we want them to come in?
I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna make a motion that they come in at the current hours, and they be extended to allow them to take those hours off until we get the audit in, and we can make a decision if there's money or there's not money, cause I don't know what's there.
And are we talking in your motion, are you referring to the total amount of hours that they have at this time, sir, which would be, under, where it says vacation per DA, for instance, for Mr. Andrade, it'd be four thirty two point eighty one, for Mr. Pope, two seventy eight point fifty six, for Cindy Constantio, one ninety nine point five oh.
So, you're accepting the liability of the vacation hours on behalf of the county, even though you don't know that you're gonna have money to pay for it?
That is a great one. And, and, and if I may, Commissioner's judge, I'm willing to accept the contingency that, you know, if some of these monies come back to me, and it's a considerable amount, I'm willing to take care of my people so it doesn't burden the county at all. But I think, again, I go back to the same thing, I think we have done, I have done, a very good job running this office in a fiscal manner, very soundly, since I've taken over, there's been things that y'all haven't had to pay for, which you agreed to pay for, which I did out of my own pocket, there's things that we've had to do, just like other offices have done, so, I, I mean, I think all these things can be taken in consideration, you know, Mrs. Smith can argue this, Mike argued this all the time in court, there's something that we call, so thankfully, the circumstances, look at the big picture here.
Yeah.
You cannot tell me for one instant that this office has not changed since I've taken over, and that we haven't become more proficient and efficient, hell, you're even having the DA come to the commissar's court meetings now on a regular basis, except for when I'm in the hospital.
Cause you're asking for money.
Yeah, well, where do you ask, you have to tell.
Exactly, no, no, but you're right, you're right, I'm, I'm just, I was kidding, you're right, he never came. But remember, you're accepting liabilities like you did with the salaries, and now with the vacation hours, so you need to set aside money for them.
I just know that according to our auditor, we don't have that type of money available right now in my payroll account. In that payroll account, in the accounts you do.
Alright, there is no motion, a second, so the motion dies.
That's lovely.
Welcome to my world.
What about, now, go, you're talking about that issue.
It's done.
If I may recommend, since we do have a policy in place that addresses our employees, and how we're gonna have them use anything that's already overage of their max, can't we do the same for the DA?
That's what he tried to.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Paying them money.
But there's, there was no second on the motion.
You are paying them money, cause you're.
I'm ready.
Yeah, but then, as the counselor said, we're accepting the liability.
You're accepting liability.
So, when we bring the hours over, we're accepting the liability.
Right, so, if you allow him to make the payout, then they just come in at the max, like any other employee with those years of service.
So, you're advocating for the county to pay that, accept that liability?
We're gonna win.
Accepting the one, accepting the maximum tier, or accepting the maximum that he wants to pay out?
I'm just asking, I don't know what you're recommending.
What do you recommend, Matt?
Well, you really got two choices, you could bring him into the max tier, max not the overage, the max tier, box three, or you just let him go ahead and pay out the whole amount, the thirty one, with additional funds from the amounts that are currently under audit, and if there is, uh, something goes bad with the audit, well, on a percentage basis, we hope that these funds are just a small, tiny, tiny, tiny fraction of what happened on that.
That's, what was my question, is there money other than ours?
There is, and in this way, they would come in with a zero liability, if the thirty two was paid out, the seventeen was paid out, they would come in with the twelve thousand liability, which is.
But if you, if you book a liability, you're gonna have to book revenue to pay it, so you guys need to establish where that money's gonna come from, in, in the event something's wrong.
Bottom line is, we need that, we need the audit done.
Yeah, we need the audit before we do anything.
That way, he's guaranteed money, we're guaranteed money, we know where it's coming from. I would think.
Well, you did a good job trying to get Mr. Battle his money.
Alright, next.
Yeah, no, I can, that's, that, what'd you say?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, favor, Judge. There's a motion, I need a second. Second, okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody? We will solve this, please, vacation.
Oh, that's why they did it.
Five zero, and last, is the appointment of the audit from Portillo, Patino, Brown and Hill, for fiscal year, uh, twenty seventeen.
Yes, uh, apparently this was out ill worded as well, so, but I would like to get the audit process started a little bit earlier, last year, the audit was filed on the last day, this year, the budget's filed on the last day, I would like to, um.
Consistent.
Yeah, we're, at least we have that.
You can plan for that.
I would like to start the process sooner on one of those.
Last year, maybe before, didn't you make a motion, Commissioner, to go out for somebody else?
We did that, we've done that several times, we've never gone out.
Why are we still using someone, there's a court order that, that, to go out and get somebody else to do this.
The, the, the court order was to go out and request for qualifications for a firm to audit our books, and to look at what's available.
But I think the contract right now, right? That's a problem, isn't it?
Well, we did that a year ago. But we didn't do anything because we were in a bind, I'm getting the audit done, so we ended up just rehiring the people we had, because we were running out of time.
Okay, so.
I don't know what our timeline is, which we're, once again, out of time.
Yeah.
Pretty much out of time.
They, they, they book up.
And so, you'll get together with Ryan, and start that publication process right away?
Start the RFQ process?
Cause you already have, uh, authority to do this.
Okay.
Alright, let's go now with item E, add opinion KP zero one sixteen.
It is.
Very good.
Yep. Alright, nothing else, and we adjourn.